...the agreement by unanimous vote with Councilmember Segarini absent. The City of Sonora has reached an agreement with 852 Mono, L.C., and the Corner Gas Station Incorporated, the owners of the property and gas station at 852 Mono Way, to purchase the necessary property and improvements to allow the construction of the Greenlee Road Mono Way Intersection Project Phase Two. The city will be acquiring the needed real property, including the right-of-way and building, along with the furnishings, fixtures, and equipment of the gas station business. As a part of the transaction, the property owner will be removing the building and related site improvements. The total purchase price is $1,624,000, including $1,092,000 for the real property, $362,000 for the furnishings, fixtures, and equipment, and $170,000 for demolition costs. The property owner will be retaining approximately one-half acre of property, the six-stall car wash, and the fuel island canopy. The project is jointly funded by the city and county through traffic impact mitigation fees collected from new development. I will now adjourn the closed session of the City Council, and I will open the City Council Meeting of April the 3rd, 2017. And the first order of business is to join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Connie Williams.
Here.
Jennifer Venta.
Here.
Matt Atkins.
Here.
Mark Flummer.
Here.
Mr. Segarini is absent tonight. City Clerk is here, Administrator Tim Miller.
Here.
Our interim City Administrator is absent. Attorney Douglas White.
Here.
Administrative Services Director Jennifer Calloway.
Here.
Fire Chief Amy New, here. Interim Police Chief Michael Harden.
Here.
And Community Development Director Rochelle Callag.
Here.
Okay, and the City Clerk's report on agenda posting.
At 1:15 PM on the 31st day of March 2017, the agenda for this meeting was posted outside C and M.
Approval of the agenda. One item that will be continued is D1, the recognition of Shelley Hans. She is out of town this evening, so we'll have to reschedule it. So we'll move on to D2, which is the introduction of Police Officer Cory DeFor. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
You did.
And Chief Harden?
Thank you, Mayor Williams, members of the council. Once again, we get the opportunity to introduce one of Sonora's newest police officers. And I just want to say, I think it's a great opportunity that we get to bring new employees to the council meeting and give you an opportunity to get to recognize your most recent investment. Then the previous stops I've had along my career, we've not had the opportunity to do this. So I think it's a great little nuanced touch that Sonora has to offer. So let me introduce you to Cory DeFor. He was born in Las Vegas, Nevada. His grandmother was a judge in Clark County and went off to take him to court before the age of 10. That gave him a respect and interest in law enforcement. And in 2007, Cory married his wife Nicole in South Lake Tahoe on November 11th, 2016. Just about five months ago, Cory and Nicole welcomed their first child in the world, Madison Ransom, who's with us tonight. Cory enjoys reading and spending time with his wife and son. He enjoys target and skeet shooting, gardening, watching hockey and baseball, and coaching baseball. Cory enlisted the United States Marine Corps in 2005 at the age of 17. He deployed to Iraq in 2008 and to Afghanistan in 2010. He received the Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, the Marine Corps Combat Action Ribbon, the Global War on Terrorism Medal, the OIF and the OEF Medal, and the International Security Assistance Force Medal. He served as a Quick Reaction Force Gunner, Sergeant of the Guard, Guard Chief, and Liaison Officer, and Detainee Facility Chief in the United States Marine Corps. He was honorably discharged from the Marine Corps in 2013. After the Marine Corps, he worked for the San Joaquin Delta College Police Department as a Campus Safety Officer while attending the Police Academy at Delta College. And we are more than pleased to have Cory at the Sonora Police Department. At this time, I'd like to administer the oath of office and have a badge pinning. And Nicole, if you want to come up, or maybe I could ask someone to take a couple of photographs so we can... Jen, would you be willing to do that?
Do you want me to do mine?
Oh, sure. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Cory DeFor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge of duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge of duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Officer DeFor.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Want to say anything, Cory?
I'd just like to say thank you for giving the opportunity to work for you, and I look forward to it. Last week and a half, I've been driving around with Officer Memmer, Officer Bowden, trying to get myself orientated. And I haven't been in a community where people come out and say, hey, thank you, just for driving around and doing a job since I was probably 13. So I'm really excited to be here. Thank you.
And Cory, I want to say, and I can say this from all the council members, thank you very much for your service to our country.
I enjoyed every bit of it.
And not only did you keep us safe over there, you're here to keep us safe here in our own little city. So thank you very much for coming here.
Thank you.
Next, we have City of Sonora Employee Service Awards.
No, go ahead.
We have Tyler Pichet, Fire Department for 15 years, Rochelle Callag, Community Development Department for 20 years, and William Atkins, Public Works Department for 35 years. I think staff wanted to say something?
Yes. Tyler and William weren't able to make it tonight, but Rochelle Callag is here. So if the mayor would like to make that presentation, we'd certainly invite you to do that.
I would. So Ms. Callag, would you come up to the podium, please?
Okay.
All right.
Takes a little bit.
So I know how important it is to have employees that we can count on and that have been here for a long period of time. And you're a wealth of knowledge, and you've grown, I understand tremendously through these 20 years you've been here. So we'd like to present to you the City of Sonora's Certificate of Recognition. The City of Sonora would like to recognize Rochelle Callag for 20 years of service to the city as Community Development Director. The dates are September the 9th, 1996, through September the 9th, 2016, signed by the mayor, Connie Williams, and City Administrator Tim Miller. And again, thank you so much for all you've done and all you do.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to say something, you're more than welcome to do so.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. It's been, I can't believe it's been 20 years. It just blows me away. It's been a great place to work over the years. I've worked with some of you from the beginning in different capacities, and it's just a wonderful place, a wonderful city. One of these days, I'll retire and I'll miss all of you guys, but I'm going to be around for a few more years. But thank you guys so much for all the opportunities that have been provided, and this is a wonderful city. Thank you, guys.
And at another council meeting, we will be honoring both Tyler and William. Correct, Mr. Miller?
In what time is scheduled?
Okay, great. All right. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Seeing none, I'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Item number one is to approve the following meeting minutes. City Council Closed Session Meeting of March 20th, 2017. City Council Open Session Meeting of March 20th, 2017. Item number two is approval to pay invoices of previously budgeted expenses on April 4th, 2017. And item number three is approval of disbursements in the amount of $176,140.88 on March 31st, 2017, for payroll, inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, leave payouts, and miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions. Any questions or comments?
I'll move on to the consent calendar.
Any public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously with... Okay. The next item is public hearings, which tonight we have none. Is there any public comment? Item H is unfinished business. Item number one is consideration to participate with Sierra Nevada Partnership to prepare an energy action plan and whether to authorize the city administrator to execute the program participation agreement on behalf of the city. And before we open this up, have we, Mary Jane, have we received any correspondence on this item?
This we have from Charles Sagerstrom. Would you like to read that into the record?
If you could just note whether or not it's a letter of support for...
It is a letter of support. Total support and also his volunteering to help.
That's fine, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So we'll go move on to staff report then.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item was on your agenda two prior meetings ago, and there were some questions that arose about the plan, some further conversations staff wanted to have with the proponent. That discussion has taken place. Any of the concerns that were expressed have been addressed, and if the council is prepared to move forward tonight, staff is ready to, with your authorization, execute the agreement. The only comment I would make is, as the council recalls in our retreat, there's a number of projects that you identified that you want staff to devote time to. This will have to be factored in with those other projects and apportion our time accordingly. So just be aware of that.
I don't think that Ms. Callag has seen this correspondence of an offer to, as a citizen volunteer, to help with, to offset city staff time requirements.
No, but that's, I've actually, I talked with Paul and...
How about, I was going to say...
Sorry, I was... So he provided to us several cities' plans to look at. Pretty much all of the implementation programs are very similar, if not exactly the same. So we talked about alternatives for the city, and if there's areas where we think it's going to be pretty staff-intensive, if we can alter the plans accordingly, and he didn't have a problem with that. So everything that we talked about, my concerns have all been addressed. So I have nothing else on that. And the forming of the plan and putting the plan together will really fall more to Jen for all the city facilities and then other outside agencies, and they've assured us that most of that is obtained through them. So it's okay. I'm on our behalf.
And just so the council knows, I ran into Charles recently, and I knew that Charles is on the board at Sierra Business Council, so I shared that this has been presented to us and offered to the City of Sonora. And so his statement to me was, most of the work, most of the information that's gathered, the heavy lifting information, is done pretty much by central, by the Sierra Business Council, because they get a lot of the, the majority of the information comes from PG&E. So I wanted the council to know about that conversation and what I've been told by Charles. So are there questions that any of the council members have for any of, or comments for any of the staff members?
I guess I'll just start off. My biggest thing, again, I'm sure this is great. I have no problems with this. So the action plan, my only real concern is that we've got several real irons in the fire after some goal-setting exercises that we had. And I'm concerned that if we start on this also, some of those others may essentially cool down, those irons in the fire will cool down. I will say, though, with Charles Sagerstrom volunteering his time, that does help change my mind a little bit, and I know he's a person of his word, so that I'm not concerned about. I'm just concerned, even with an outside source helping out, how much that's going to pull away from other projects we've got going in the city. That's probably my biggest concern.
Any other council members have questions or comments?
No. Well, I think that this is a good idea. I think the benefits from it will, are worth some of the staff time. And if Mr. Sagerstrom is willing to help out with some of that stuff, that's even better. I like to think of it more of a win-win situation, really. So I'm completely in the support of it. I don't foresee that there'd be a significant amount of staff time that would preclude something else. I don't perceive it being a huge, huge amount of staff time that would block other things. I think it just would be probably a lower priority amongst some of the other things, so it may not get done as quickly. This might not get done as quickly as some other things. But I think the benefits are there, so I'm completely supportive.
I guess my question would be, if basically having a citizen volunteer come and help, how much is, how much time is that going to alleviate from city staff?
He's got a lot of expertise, so...
Yeah, and that's exactly what I'm thinking. And again, I know his reputation. He's somebody that's going to keep his word. So again, I have a hard time saying no after reading this letter.
Mark, anything? You don't have to speak right now. I'm going to open it for public comment. I don't want to push you into something.
I think we should be putting our efforts into more and cheaper generation instead of just thinking we can save ourselves into prosperity. But thriftiness is usually a good thing, too, and I'm generally for it.
Okay. Then I'm going to go, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to share their opinion, expertise, whatever, with the council? And I think that's Paul out there in the audience. Do you have anything you'd like to come up and say?
Yes.
Okay.
When I was here last month, there was some comments just kind of on past performance of our program. And really, the State of California started energy efficiency programs in the '70s during the energy crisis, and they started collecting the public goods charge around that time. And a lot of that money didn't come back up the hill until 2010, when Sierra Business Council took over administration of the energy efficiency programs for the Sierra Nevada region. And since that time, we have been able to bring in over $5.2 million in incentives to rebates to local governments and commercial customers to do lighting switch, swap outs, refrigeration, air conditioning changeouts earlier than they would normally. And those programs are saving annually over 30 million kilowatt-hours throughout the region and have estimated annual savings of over $6.2 million each year. And most of those programs, projects, pay back within either six months or two years. And it kind of depends on the project, obviously, and the cost of the materials, but that means they've, almost all of those projects that have been installed between 2010 and 2016 have paid off and are saving, are generating money for businesses and local governments in our region. And the real goal of the Energy Action Plan is to accelerate those savings, both within local government, residential community members, and commercial. We've been able to serve about 3,000 customers throughout our whole region, but that's more on just word of mouth. And one business comes and recommends it to their, to other people in the community. It's really been a kind of word-of-mouth, slow developing program, but there's a lot of programs that PG&E provides in addition to our program that we offer for residential customers and specialty hospitality, food service customers that we want to make aware, community members aware of. And we think that this program to develop an energy action plan really will identify the opportunities here and accelerate those savings. And on the generation side, I mean, we do, energy efficiency can only do so much. I mean, they're likely with growth, there will need new generation. We think the best and lowest cost is local renewable generation, but that's just our personal preference, and I think generation will be necessary as well.
Okay, thank you. Just for the general public, who, I want to say that this is a program that is no cost to the City of Sonora. And the State of California is a leader in trying to get more energy efficient, and possibly this Energy Action Plan, when completed, could help us maybe in some way when we're applying for grants that need to have some of the information that's in this Energy Action Plan that we will have already gotten. So just wanted to give the general public a little bit more information.
And one other thing, it's not just for government agencies, it's also for commercial or residential?
That's correct.
So it's for all citizens of the community?
The, this gives government a tool needed to create strategies and programs to implement projects to reduce emissions in their jurisdiction, and specifically emissions related to energy use. The co-benefits of these measures may include lower energy bills for residents, improved air quality, and better land use practice. So, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
Well, Madam Mayor, I will move on, move to have the city participate in, with the Sierra Nevada Partnership, to prepare an energy action plan and authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
I'm going to second this one, but I just want to make a comment. What changed my mind on this was receiving this letter. So again, I was real concerned about staff after speaking with staff for 20, 30 minutes a day. So this changed my mind.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Any other public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. New business. Item number one is consideration to accept the 2016 General Plan 2020 Annual Progress Good evening, Ms. Callag.
I was hoping that by now I wouldn't be strolling around on this thing, but no such luck. I'm glad to be back, though, I'll tell you that, for the second time around. So this is an annual requirement of the city. We're required to submit our report on our general plan progress to OPR, and our housing element progress also to the Housing, HCD, Housing Community Development Department for compliance of where we are on the progress of implementing our housing element. Over the past few years, we have done actually several ordinances and programs and policies changes that have really shown some progress in these areas. This report has to be filed with those agencies as well as you, we also present it to you for acceptance. There's, this is a pretty straightforward document. We have, we go over the different ordinances or any general plan amendments that were done during the year. We've included all of that. We tie everything back to the appropriate policy goals or implementation program in the general plan, and we do the same thing for the housing element. We're also required to attach our successor housing report and submit it at this time as well, which has been done. And you guys have already seen that, because we were required to submit that as a, or go over that with you last fall at another meeting. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer it, but we're just asking that you accept the document.
Questions, council members? The only question I have is on the memo. The purpose of the, of the annual progress report is to inform legislative bodies. Is that legislative body the city council, or is it other legislative bodies throughout the state?
Yeah, it's throughout the state, because they're trying to determine if people are getting, you know, implementing, especially on the housing element side of it, to make sure jurisdictions are following through with what they said they were going to do.
Okay. Thank you. Since there's no questions or comments by the council, I'll open it up for public comment.
I just want to say that our planner Paula deserves a medal, because the Planning Commission meeting that I came to, it was like, oh my God, there must have been 45 minutes to an hour of them carrying on about, well, this is the way we've always done it, we should be able to do it this way, blah, 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 blah. And she was so incredibly patient at trying to guide them through the process and into the 21st century.
Thank you for that. We'll make note and let Paula know, and I guess we did a good job at some point in time with the selection of Paula. So thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move, we approve the consideration to accept the 2016 General Plan 2020 Annual Progress Report.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Any other public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. This monthly reports, we have none. Any public comment? Vision Sonora Committee Report, we have none. Any public comment? Communications, we have none. Any public comment? Councilmember and department head reports. I will begin with Ms. Calloway in our Administrative Services Department. Anything tonight? No? And Chief New, anything from the Fire Department?
Nothing tonight, David.
Okay, Ms. Callag, anything from the Community Development Department?
Nothing further.
All right. Interim Chief, Police Chief Harden, anything from the Police Department?
No, Mayor, no report.
Okay.
I believe you do have something to report. You should be up here. You are scheduling coffee with a cop, thank you very much, on April 18th from 9:00 to 10:00 at Union Hill Coffee Shop, and we haven't had that in a long...
10:00 at Union Hill Coffee Shop, and we haven't had that in a long time.
Well, thank you.
I think you should celebrate that and get people to come out.
We're going to try to put it out. Well, thank you. We're going to try to put that out in many mediums as we can, on our Facebook page. I stopped in this morning at Union Hill, and he's got a poster that he's going to put in the window that he hasn't done so yet, so thank you.
And just so that...
So when is that again?
And so...
April 18th at 9:00.
It's from 9:00 to 10:00 in the morning, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Union Hill Restaurant, our coffee shop. Mm-hmm. Washington, Washington.
So for the general public, the Coffee with a Cop is April the 18th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Union Hill Coffee, which is directly across the street from the Superior Court Building.
That's correct.
So thank you very much for reaching out to the community.
Absolutely. It's designed just to be a non-agendized meeting with no motive, just an opportunity for us to listen to the community and let them tell us what's going on in their lives and their community, and just an exchange of ideas.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Mr. White, anything from our city attorney?
Is that there?
Okay, Mr. Miller, anything from staff?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Garavanta?
Thought you were going to go the other way there. The only meeting of note that I attended recently, since our last meeting, was the Fair Board meeting on Wednesday, the 22nd, where Penn Alstott was chosen to be the new executive director of the Fair Board, of the fair, rather. And he has an extensive background, San Bernardino County, and also the Cow Palace, and I think he'll do a pretty good job.
And Mary Jane, I ran right by you, so do you have anything for us this evening? Okay. Councilmember Hawkins?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilmember Plummer?
Thank you.
Well, and this is probably a shock, but I don't have anything either, because right after our last meeting, I went on vacation, so I took a break. Okay, on that note, we'll go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting at 5:33 p.m. And thank you all for your interest and participation.
So that means I was acting mayor and I didn't even have it?